Part of the regular meeting in the McAllister City Council Tuesday, November 12th. We do have a quorum. We have Roy Prince from North Gate Mathis Church here to leave some pledge in the presentation.
All right, let's stand together, please. Let's begin with our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, let's open up in prayer, please. Father, we thank you for your grace and your goodness. We thank you, Lord, that you have so blessed us. I pray tonight that you bless the counselors and the mayor and give them, Father, wisdom to direct the matters of the city. And may all that's done be honoring to you. In Jesus' name we ask. Amen. Lord bless y'all. God bless you. Thank you.
I want to ask the city manager if we can buy a flag.
It seems expensive.
It used to be right there.
Faith-based prayer and a faith-based pledge. Cora, would you call the roll, please?
I noticed you had one on your corner yesterday and now it's gone. I know.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Richard?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
We're on to recognition and awards. And our first is an award, a recognition, I mean Oklahoma Municipal League Employee Recognition Jeez, for 25 years of service. The recipient is the head of facility maintenance. He takes care of 57 structures throughout the city, actually goes outside the city. He, anytime, anytime anything is done downtown, Delane is down there working. I know last year around Christmas, they worked two or three o'clock in the morning at one time putting in, getting the lights going. He's always asking what he can do to help whenever something comes up that the city, the city is doing. And I had the privilege of actually working for the city at the time that Delane was hired, I guess 25 years ago. That's, and we're both getting old. His hair wasn't gray back then. But, yes, so, would you, join me in honoring Delane Harrington with the 25 years of service.
Right here, guy. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Could you come around?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Delane, thank you.
Congratulations.
Billy, thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
How's it going?
It was easy.
Time to move on.
The first will be the Great American Smokeout. Whereas smoking remains the single most preventable cause of premature death in our society, whereas increasing numbers of children are experimenting with the product that can produce lifetime addiction with an increased risk of cancer, and whereas more Americans die every day, every year, from tobacco-related diseases than from AIDS, alcohol, car accidents, fires, illegal drugs, murders, and suicides combined, and whereas tobacco use in Oklahoma results in an annual loss of $3.72 billion in medical and economic productivity costs. Whereas for years, millions of smokers have participated in the American Cancer Society's Great American Smokeout, a day on which they give up cigarettes for 24 hours in the hope that they may quit for good, and whereas quitting smoking is proven, is proven to improve health, reduce disease burden, and increase longevity, and whereas the demonstration of success suggests that the American, Great American Smokeout has potential for improving health. Now therefore, I, John Brown, Mayor, that's ironic, therefore, I, John Brown, Mayor of the city of McAllister, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim November 21st, 2019, as the Great American Smokeout in the city of McAllister, and encourage all tobacco users to demonstrate that they can quit for the day and perhaps longer, signed this day, November 2019. Do you, do you want a picture, since we do have the lights now? Apparently so. Two cigarettes I smoked in my entire life. Whereas the government in McAllister, Oklahoma celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 30.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all firms with paid employees in the United States and are responsible for 64.9% of net jobs created from 2000 to 2018. And whereas small businesses employ 47.3% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas 94% of consumers in the United States value the contributions small businesses make to their community, and whereas 96% of consumers who plan to shop on Small Business Saturday said the day inspires them to go to small, independently-owned retailers or restaurants they have not been to before or would not have otherwise tried. Whereas 92% of companies planning promotions on Small Business Saturday said the day helps their business stand out during the busy holiday shopping season. Whereas 59% of small business owners said Small Business Saturday contributes significantly to their holiday sales each year. And whereas McAllister, Oklahoma supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Therefore, I, John Brown, Mayor of the city of McAllister, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim November 30th, 2019, a Small Business Saturday in the city of McAllister. We are now on to citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Will you do not have any? And we will move to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. The agenda tonight consists of, A, approval of minutes from the October 8, 2019, regular meeting in the McAllister City Council; B, approval of claims for October 16, 2019, through November 5, 2019; C, accept and place on file the Oklahoma's for Independent Living Quarterly Report for the months of July through September 2019; D, consider an act upon a resolution allowing the Oklahoma Department of Transportation to select one of ODOT's pre-qualified engineering firms to provide engineering services to the city of McAllister with, for compliance with the National Bridge Inspection Standards; E, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor and council members to expend $50 each to attend a reception honoring the Wanda Bass Foundation following the Tulsa Symphony's performance on Saturday, December 7, 2019; F, consider an act upon indefinitely postponing tort claim number 207-232-LR filed by Lauren Harbin; G, accept and place on file the Pride and McAllister Quarterly Report for the months of July through September 2019. Would any, anyone like anything removed?
G. G.
G. B. B.
F.
F. In that case, I take a motion and a second to approve items A, C, D, and E. Motion, Councilman Reed, second, Councilman Smith. Any discussion? Cora, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We'll just work our way down. So, B?
Mr. Stasiak, on page 40 of our packet, on, it's in the stormwater fund.
I've got numbers up to 20...
26.
26. Are you, oh, you're on, online.
Yeah. Well, anyways, it's in the stormwater fund.
Okay.
We've got in there a capital L.A., West Cole tree removal for $18,828.
Okay, hold on. Just a second. Fund 21?
Yeah. It's the second item down. Would you mind getting me some more information on that?
I'm sorry, I was trying to find it.
Okay.
Tell me what it is again.
It's on limestone gap construction. It's the second item there.
Uh-huh.
It's a capital L.A., West Cole. It says tree removal for a little over, almost $19,000. Could you get me some more information on that, on what exactly work was done there?
If you'd like to take a moment, Mr. Skimbo's here, and we could ask him if he's familiar with this limestone gap bill for $18,000. Could you come, I mean, if we need to look up some information, that's fine.
I'm just curious.
But you have some knowledge about it?
It seems like a lot of money to remove a tree.
It's, it's multiple.
It's more than trees. It's, uh, earthen canals that we're going through, clearing it. That whole area is a catch basin, and it floods and sewer backs up.
Okay.
Is this the area over off of the old, um, Twin Cities property?
Yes, it's in that area.
Okay. Yeah, you have to see that to believe it.
Okay. Can you let me know exactly where it's at? I'd like to go see.
Absolutely. It is on, uh...
It's Col, it's Col and Robin.
It's Col and Robin. And you actually drive into the facility and go to the back, and then it, it's about a, it's probably six, seven, eight hundred feet long.
Okay.
And it's got a, anyway, go look at it.
I will.
You'll understand what's going on.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
We actually started work on, uh, North Brewer and worked all the way to Main Street there.
Gotcha.
And several, several projects.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Um, F, who is that?
Okay. I should know this. I've been on city council for over a year now. So, I don't understand how this process works very well. I read, I read this agenda packet. So, this lady was driving her car and damaged her car, and then she makes, I'm asking the city attorney, and then she, or the city manager, and then she makes a claim to the city for the damages? Is that correct? Okay. Are there instances where someone does that and we pay the claim?
We've got liability insurance, and we need to pass it so that the insurance company can investigate the claim.
Right, I get that. But do we, are there claims that we don't pass to the insurance company?
Not liability claims. That's a liability, uh, for claim.
Okay.
Councilman, if I could clarify a little bit, um, we have 48, if, if we have something that's reported to the city, we have actually 48 hours to remedy the situation. If we don't remedy it and somebody comes along, let's say it's a pothole, somebody comes along after 48 hours and damages their car, then we have responsibility for some of that damage? So as soon as it's reported, we act on those very quickly to get out and remedy the situation.
So, in a situation like this, where we didn't know there was a pothole?
Correct.
We potentially have no liability in that case?
What happened in this instance is we had a blown, blown-out water line which flooded the area, and this young lady, before we even got out there, decided to drive through it. Is that what happened? That's not the different one?
That one's been already denied by the insurance recommendation. This is a different one. This is the one where the manhole cover was not seated in the manhole.
Okay.
So, if the claim, the claimant, uh, is ultimately denied by insurance, then they have an opportunity to sue the city of McAllister, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And we, I've asked this question before, but I'm asking it again. We have the authority to postpone this forever?
No, they can't file suit until we have an opportunity to pass on the thing. And so I think they have to bring their suit within six months of the incident, or they're barred by statute.
Well, I mean, we're, but I mean, the motion today is to indefinitely postpone the tort claim.
Well, it's, I think that's under our, our rules of order, but, you know, you don't want to postpone it or table it till next meeting. You just, you need to give the 90 days. There's a 90-day period in there that they cannot file suit. And so we postpone it to allow the insurance company the 90 days to go out and inspect and pass, and investigate the claim. And then if they come back and say, no, the person has up to a six months, I believe, to file suit on the claim. If they don't, they're time barred. But we don't want to take preemptive action to allow the suit, uh, which would jeopard, I, I would assume at that point, the insurance company would deny our coverage, and we would have to pay that claim. So it's a, it's a process of allowing the insurance company to step up, investigate the claim, and, and say whether it's good or bad. Now, if they say they deny coverage, then we would not approve the claim.
Okay. Thank you.
On a positive note, I just wanted to call attention to the Pride and McAllister Quarterly Report. They went out and checked 247 streetlights, found 11% of them dark, notified the utility about it, put in 81 stormwater markers where they installed little things on the entryway to the storm system to try to keep people aware that you shouldn't put grass clippings and stuff like that, collected 10,000 pounds of electronic equipment that otherwise go in and someplace bad, planted trees, and then they repainted the National Guard Army. Dave, the vice president's here. Please pass our thanks along to Pride, okay?
All right. I think, I think we should probably vote on these separately because it may, someone might not want to vote for one or they want to vote for the other. So, I need a motion and a second on item B. Motion, Councilman Reed, second vice, Cora Stevens. Any discussion? Cora, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. I need a motion and a second on item F. Motion, Councilman Smith. Second, Councilman Reed. Now, F first.
Oh, I don't even know we pulled that out. Okay. Sorry.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Cora, would you call the roll, please?
Second, Councilman...
Councilman Reed, yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Richard?
No.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Now, item G. Motion, Council, Council, Councilman Smith, second, Councilman Reed. Any discussion? Cora, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're now on to public hearing. Any person interested in any ordinance listed under scheduled business shall have an opportunity to be heard in accordance with Article 2, Section 212B of the city charter. The hearing tonight is an ordinance of the city of McAllister, Oklahoma, mainly an ordinance number 2656, which established the budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for separability clause, and declaring an emergency. Need a motion and a second to open the hearing. Motion, Councilman Reed, second, Councilman Smith. Any discussion? Cora, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, so we're now in the public hearing. Anyone wanting to address the council on this matter, step forward, say no one, take a motion and a second to close. Motion, Councilman Reed, second, Councilman Smith. Any discussion? Cora, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to agenda item number one, discussion and update on the Safe Routes to School policy adopted August 28, 2018. Mr. Richard, of Livingston Jurors.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's, I don't have anything to say other than, uh, we adopted this a little over a year ago, and I wanted to get an update from the staff about progress or status since then.
Yeah, Councilman, we have Ms. Clifton here today. It's going to bring us up to speed on the process.
Thank you.
And what's been accomplished.
Good evening. I have started the annual reporting that is required under this policy, and it's not complete in its entirety yet. However, we are gathering information now. But I do want to convey that it is an ongoing process, this Safe Routes to School policy, and so we continually make, you know, these improvements across the city, or attempt to make these improvements. So, I've, I've gone through the policy and determined the areas that need to be reported. And so in the summary and evaluation, there are some infrastructure improvements and maintenance priorities, promotional activities, bicycle infrastructure, pedestrian infrastructure, and then street trees and signage, and then any recommendations that we see that need to be made to this policy. We have been able to, like, include some signage, some traffic calming measures, you know, around some of the schools. The promotional activities, we have not done any of those yet. I am working with the school right now to gather information of what they're also doing. Bicycle infrastructure, we have like a temporary bike lane that went in over on East College Avenue, and we also have future anticipated bicycle lanes that are going in, and there should be striped probably, I would say this winter, maybe within the next few weeks. The pedestrian infrastructure, we're currently researching viability of trail connections to local schools for future grant opportunities. There are also some changes that we did with the use of multi-use trails and some improvements on that. Street trees, we have planted several trees across the city. I was told there's 50 to 60 trees planted, many of those by city staff in our parts department, also partnership with Pride and McAllister. I'm trying to get the information on street trees that are planted along streets and the right-ofways. Signage, there have been some signage secured from TSET Healthy Living Grant for bicycle lanes that will soon be going up on those newly striped bicycle lanes, and then pedestrian crossing signage in front of a couple of schools, and some stop signs that were also included near daycares or schools. I can tell you, I've created a list of school facilities within the incorporated limits of the city of McAllister. I've got 13, and then there also is a career tech and the higher education centers, and just trying to determine what, there are some assessments that have to be done because they have to take part in the National School Lunch Program, and, well, I guess I should say, to identify which ones are priority areas, and based on the criteria of them participating in National School Lunch Program, high collision areas for pedestrians and bicyclists, and also lack of infrastructure in comparison to other areas. So, probably one of the biggest thing, well, I would say, I've worked with the police department, let me back up, and there are collision reports, but there's no way to pull that data electronically, so we're actually going to have to go and through the collision reports, and there's estimated to be at least 1,000. So we'll have to go through that by hand and determine those. So it's going to take me a little bit of time to get this report all done and the assessments done on the schools. On the infrastructure, that's probably the, the largest portion, and right now I'm working with our TSET representative on determining some, maybe some procedures or tools to do those assessments. And also, in, in this policy, you might note that it says two miles from the schools. If you do a two-mile radius around each school in the city of McAllister, that encompasses the entire city limits of McAllister, except for the Steven Taylor Industrial Park. So, if there are some recommendations, I would say that we need to look at the distance requirements of these schools and how that affects our grant opportunities going forward with the Safe Routes to School. But, and then also maybe some policy changes on, like, the reporting that we do internally, because it is kind of difficult to go back and, and gather information a year's worth all at once of everything that we're doing here, because we do quite a bit, and I'm not always up to date of what's going on, because it's two different departments that are part of this policy. So I hope to have this report to you very soon, and I hope that that is a brief summary will work until that point.
Thank you.
Any questions, Councilman Reed?
Jamie, since so much of this policy has to do with walkability, should we change our city ordinance that would require that any new business or new house that's constructed includes sidewalks?
I think that's something that we're definitely going to look at, especially after the comprehensive plan. You know, as new businesses come in or subdivisions are built, I know that in subdivision, it is required to include sidewalks, however, it doesn't really specify if it's on both sides, and so we need some clarification in those areas, but that's definitely something that we need to look at. I agree.
Any other questions or comments?
I know that we did the complete streets, like when we replace a street now, and correct me if I'm wrong, we put in sidewalks, correct?
And if, yes, there is, it is a policy to include those if it's feasible to be able to do it. So, I mean, there's some, I don't, I don't know, I haven't read it really closely here lately, but yes, I mean, there is some, you know, to include those elements for pedestrians.
Gotcha. Mr. Stasiak, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're going to talk about this here shortly on the Washington exchange up there where we're doing that. We're going to have the sidewalks still there, correct? We're not taking those out?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Just made me think of something. If we are requiring, if we are, if we're putting sidewalks in when we're doing streets and we require the home, the property owner to maintain them, that's, we probably need to do something to clear that up, because that's, that could cause problems.
Perhaps, yeah.
Any other? We will move on to agenda item number two. Thank you. Discussion on possible amendment to city charter Article 3, Section 3.01, city manager appointment, qualifications, compensation, and periodic evaluations. Mr. Richard, yours again.
Thank you. So this has been on my mind a while, really kind of started about this time last year with the, the governor election in the state of Oklahoma, and then after that, a lot of the different appointments he's made, you know, throughout the state. I think that these qualifications that are currently in the charter are overly restrictive of this body. I think that it creates too much of a limit on the person that can serve as city manager, and this is kind of an awkward conversation. I mean, I don't have any issue with the current city manager, but as we, you know, move forward, at some point in the future, there's going to be another city manager. And I think this council, whoever sits on this council, should be vested with the authority to determine who they think is the best qualified person, regardless of their educational or work experience. I mean, I think we could certainly have somebody serve as city manager for this city that has no previous experience in municipal government and can do a very good job. I think they can do a very poor job, too, but I think that's a decision that should be made by the council, you know, on a person-by-person basis. A little bit, or further to go on to slightly, a bit, bit of more detail, the second line of that, or the second sentence of that paragraph starts out, under qualifications, "The city manager shall be appointed solely on the basis of education and experience in the accepted competencies and practices of local government management." I mean, right there, I think we're, this, this charter provision is completely off on the, the wrong start. We should not be having a city manager based on their education and experience, but rather their ability to do the job well. And, you know, you can have all the experience and all the education in the world and still not be the most qualified person for the job. So, the idea here, to put this on the agenda, was to sort of gauge the council's interest in essentially eliminating these qualifications and returning more power to the city council to pick the person they see fit to be city manager irrespective of education or past work experience.
I got a question.
I got a question. It's okay to, so councilman, you're saying that the guy's going to become city manager, he can just do it out of high school, he doesn't need a degree?
I'm saying that if the city council thought that was the most qualified person, then yes. I mean, this is, you still got to understand, regardless of, you know, if this charter provision is changed or not, the city council ultimately decides this is the person best qualified to be city manager. With the current qualifications, and I, I don't actually know the answer to this, but there's probably a handful, or maybe a couple of handful of people in the entire city of Macalester that can be the city manager. And certainly, when I think about people I know within the city, people I know outside of the city of Macalester, a lot of those people would be unavailable to be city manager because of these qualifications. We're leaving a ton of potentially very, very qualified people off the table from being city manager.
I think that degree is, and that's my opinion. It's kind of like being a teacher, you can go teach and you don't need a degree. You may, you know, it may serve a purpose, it may not, but if you just get some guy that has no experience, I mean, he's got to have some help somewhere, he's got to come in and learn how to do it. I think in the past, we've had city managers that, you know, I don't know if they had a degree, I don't think they did, but... I don't know, I'm just so much, maybe I'm stuck too much on the education, I don't know.
What I just want to point out quickly is that, you know, anything that would be done involving the charter is had to be done by the vote of the people, so it would be not a council decision. Councilman Reed?
Mayor, I was just going to say, you know, it wasn't the city council who decided these requirements, it was the voters that decide these requirements. But I can't think of a reason why we would want to lower the bar on, on, on these requirements. You know, I, I don't think anybody can argue that the city manager is the most important position in city government other than the elected council members, who he works for. But, you know, the education and experience requirements is a baseline. It's the minimum requirements. And I, I would suggest that if there's someone who, who aspires to be a city manager of city of Macalester, if they don't meet the education requirements, they go back to school. They offer those degree programs over Easter. But I, I don't, I don't believe we should lower the bar on that. We, we, we've had the bar lowered before, and it didn't work.
Yeah, and your councilman Reed's right, this is certainly, you know, it's a charter provision, it was something adopted by the people. And, you know, all we would be doing as a council is, is asking the people, you know, if they've changed their mind. And, and I think they may have, I mean, when you look at the trend in local, state, national politics, we are certainly in an era where people, where the voters have expressed their preference for outsiders, if you will. I mean, think of the current president, think of the governor of Oklahoma. These are people that have ran for elected office, and I know this isn't elected office, but it's essentially the highest employee official in the city of Macalester. The voters have certainly said over the last handful of years that we want to bring in outsiders. We want to bring in people that can look at government from a different perspective and potentially reform government. And we, you know, with this charter provision currently can't do that. I mean, the president of the United States could not be our city manager. But that was, that was one of the reasons why I thought that it was time to reevaluate this is because I do think that the electorate has, has shifted in a manner that wants to allow more people to participate in government.
Councilman Smith?
To give a historical perspective, we've tried lowering the bar before. And we got twenty years of corruption and a prison term out of it, bad city manager. On the charter committee that rewrote the charter, we spent a lot of time on this particular item in trying to set some requirements so that what you're talking about can't happen. In other words, we don't want to bring in somebody with no experience, no educational background, who just is a favorite of four people on the council. This is trying to set a bar, and there's no guarantee you're going to get a good city manager if they meet these qualifications. But there's probably a greater possibility than if you have no requirements at all. So I would argue that this is really a bad idea.
Back to Mr. Smith.
And maybe I, I'm feeling the same way as I can. After seeing the last several elections and the last little bit, I've thought more about this and discussed it with other people. And my concerns going forward is that we are minimizing. I don't think anything having an education or experience is a bad thing, I don't think anybody can argue that. But I think to make the bar so high, it eliminates a lot of possible candidates that I really do believe voters and even this council would have the opportunity to meet and discuss things with at some day when there is another city manager going to be needed. So I, I don't think this is a bad thing to reconsider this. I, I'm actually in favor of doing what we're talking about here.
Here's my position on it, is the will of the people is the ultimate arbiter of what should be done. So this was, this was created by the will of the people. And while there may be a sea change politically where there, there is other, that, that voters look at other people, there is an initiative process that they could go through in order to get to, to do this. And I would much prefer to do it as an initiative for the, the voters to tell us that they want to vote on it other than us tell the voters. I think the initiative process would work much better than the referendum process.
I'll say this is a point, the councilman, Councilman Smith, is, you know, and maybe the answer is not what we... Maybe I think the answer is not what we have right now, but it's not nothing. But maybe we need to expand the language to include more people. Because one thing that I, you know, and I understand the concern about we want to have qualified candidates, we want to have a qualified city manager, and that's, that's certainly a worthwhile pursuit. But what I'm concerned about is that this language is actually too limiting. We're going to leave, because we're just going to leave a lot of potential people that would do a great job of being city manager out, you know. So maybe the language should be, instead of a master's degree in concentration in public administration and two years' experience, maybe it's so much experience running an organization of X size or X employees or, or something like that. Because one thing that I do worry about for this community, because, you know, when we went from, you know, we went from Randy Green being city manager to Pete Stasiak being city manager, but it was a winding path to get there with some city managers or, I don't know, less before my time, so I won't, I won't speak to them. But, but one of the challenges for hiring a city manager is finding people to apply for the job. And we have some pretty specific and narrow qualifications. And so maybe there's a path forward where we expand those qualifications, but still control for not just letting anybody apply. But, you know, you could, you could be somebody that runs a, whatever, a thousand-person multinational company who does great at delegation, I mean, you know, at executing amongst all these different scenarios, and you cannot be our city manager. If we have that person, and we probably don't, but if we have that person that wants to be city manager, I don't know why we would want, as a community, to limit that person from serving. So that was really the basis, or my thought process for this conversation.
Mayor?
Well, I'm listening, some of it will be okay, I'm telling, they need some type of councilman. Is Oklahoma, I'm sorry, mayor, I got to talk to councilman. They need some type of education, at least I think so. Either or experience, I think you'd get some state jobs. Have the master, I mean, the bachelor's and the experience. And there are several state jobs you probably can't get without the education. I mean, they put it in there. And, you know, again, it may be something to look at in the future, look to taxpayers, maybe, but... I don't know, that education, maybe that's been drilling my mind too much. It needs something.
Councilman Smith?
I think we're trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist. I suspect if we needed a city manager today and we advertised for it, we'd have a flock of applications of well-qualified people. And you're right, we've had some duds along the way, and you get that on every job you fill. But if I was trying to find a CEO at the hospital, I'd probably prefer somebody that has hospital administrative expertise. If I'm trying to get a bank president, I'd probably, and this always doesn't happen in banking, but I'd prefer a person that had banking expertise. And so, you know, I don't think we have a dearth of possible applicants for a job position. I don't think we, I don't think that happens. I think we need to keep some requirements.
As I said, I, I consider the charter, in, in essence, the constitution for the city of Macalester. And that's not something that you should just change, because, like I said, it's, it is the will of the people. And if the people are of a will to change it, I think the people should initiate that.
I have a practical question, so when you're thinking about having an election to change the charter for any other purpose, I know there's certain costs associated with having an election for the city. And I don't know if anybody in this room knows the answer to this, but since, you know, like when we're having council and mayor, and the mayor election, if we added an election to amend the charter, would there be additional costs associated? Does, does anybody, I don't even know who to ask that question to.
I would ask Cora.
Well, not, not if you have the mayor in the mix. But there's, there's different requirements for a charter change election, including the publication, how, how often it has to be done, in what increments.
But there wouldn't be additional costs?
It has to be in that large election.
Yes, it would be like the mayor's.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions, comments?
One about the finance director. See, there's an example, we're putting those kind of requirements together. You got to have a, some kind of degree, or can you just hire somebody up here without it? That'd make you sweat. It's a lot of money.
This item does not call for action. Correct. There's a wording on this, on the possible amendment of this. In that case, then we will, just one more. Just make sure I got everybody, everybody could, we'll move on to item number three, discussion on federal, state, and municipal bidding and procurement processes.
I've just realized with some of the bids and everything that we've gone through recently that I'm not as well-educated on some of the bidding procedures and processes. So I've asked the city manager if he could maybe purten, maybe it's just me, but I felt that there were some other newer councilmen on here as well, so maybe we could all learn something. Maybe everybody else knows this, I'm the only one in the room, but I thought it'd be helpful.
Take the opportunity to educate everybody, so what I've asked Ms. Urban to do is to go ahead, put together some of the bidding requirements, she's put together a short PowerPoint, and also given you the information on federal, state, and charter requirements for bidding that we follow.
In your packet, you have Exhibit One, which is the Competitive Bidding Act of nineteen seventy-four. Exhibit Two is our, our charter.
Hold on, Ms. Urban, I'm trying to get it up.
And then I've also included the federal grants procurement requirements. Exhibit Three, and then Exhibit Four is the FAA requirements, which are very similar to the federal, just some special, special, specialty items. It's just a, a quick, let me see if I can turn, oops, did it twice, okay. So the State Bidding Act is applicable to both municipalities and their trusts and any subdivision of the state. Public construction contracts exceeding fifty thousand dollars shall be let and awarded to the lowest responsible bidder through open competitive bidding. So there, there, I'll point out the fifty thousand dollars, because that's the difference between our rules locally and the state. They have a fifty thousand, we have a twenty-five thousand. The state, when we go through bids, what we do is we're trying to get proposals that are equally and uniformly known to all prospective bidders. So in the, I'll talk about the spirit of the law. In the spirit of the law, you want to get to the most qualified, if it's construction, construction companies to bid. And so you send it out to as, as many possible qualified construction companies. You have to publish it two times in consecutive weekly issues of the newspaper. And yes, it says newspapers, it's very old. You know, we put it on our website frequently, especially big bids. We're going to, with our new website, we'll be putting on every single bid on our website. But it is at least twenty-one, we use twenty-one days prior to the date set for the opening sealed bids. And so the content required, of course, is the, what, the deliverables, the character of the proposal, the name and address of the person that has, like Cora would be our city clerk, have the, the set of bidding, the date, time, and place of opening of sealed bids, of course, the name and address of the office that we're going to open it, the location we're going to open the sealed bids, and then the additional information, because some of them have, you know, bonding and any kind of cost related to it has to be included in the packet. We also always have the non collusion affidavit included in that. And this is our Macalester city code, and yes, I did it in tiny print because it's exact. But I, I underline the difference between the state and our local is the twenty-five thousand in a single transaction. So it's more strict than the, than the state. And then on the federal programs, they have a few other extra things, like I'll point out the affirmative steps that we use small firms and minority-owned firms and women-owned firms and labor surplus area firms. Again, in the spirit of the law, you, you're supposed to try to send bid packets to all, all small firms, and so that you can get equal applications to all. But free and open competitive processes right there at the top. That's the, that's the idea behind all of, all of the, the details of the requirement. I didn't want to get into the weeds. And so if you have any questions, please, please ask. I'm going over a little bit quick, but the solicitations have to be clear and accurate so that anyone can bid. It can't say it has to be a Ford, obviously, because other competitors couldn't bid on that. But it has to be that all could, general enough that all could bid. And then I have included in here, the FAA has a, and I included all the details in your packet. I'm not going to go into that. We hire consultants to do our FAA bid packets, but I'll be more than happy to answer any questions at this point. What specifically?
So when we, when we put out something like something for the streets, to make it more clear for me, are we contracting with an engineering firm like Milburger Rowley to submit and do all that to publishers? Or are we publishing all that and then they just administer it afterwards? How does that work?
Infrastructure Solutions, and if they're here.
We contract with them to put a project together for us, do all the engineering, and we contract with them to go ahead and do the bidding process for us. And then also analyze those bids. And sometimes we contract with them to oversee the job themselves, itself. So they're the ones that are putting these projects together for us. We don't have the ability to engineer anything in-house. So they act as our city engineers and put these projects under our direction. And they'll tell you all the requirements that they go through and the process that they go through.
Colleen, one of the other things as a consultant we do with that is also make sure that you stay in compliance with all of those fair bidding rules and fair bidding laws. And so kind of the outside consultant, we do it all the time. And so like a lot of times in our projects, we'll have the bidding as part of our scope of work. There are some projects we don't handle the bidding, because maybe city employees are going to do the work themselves. And so that wouldn't be in our scope. But whenever we, whenever it is in our scope, we actually go beyond what the state requires to try and get as much, many bidders as we can. We've, like, let's say the street project we just worked with. We've got twenty-plus years of contractors in the area, or even out of state, that have done street projects in the area. And we send those advertisements like, hey, this Fifth Street, or, yeah, this Fifth and Washington jobs out for bids. We send them the advertisement, so not only is it in the news... So not only is it in the newspaper, which is antiquated, and nobody really sees it there, uh, we send to three bid rooms, which that's also required by state law, is to send to three bid agencies. Um, that's an evolving business, because there used to be bid rooms, where a contractor'd go into a room and actually look at the plans in Tulsa for Project McAllister, see if they wanna bid on it. Well, it's all evolving onto the internet now. So we've got digital copies of it out there that they go look at. Um, and there are still some legitimate companies out there, but then there's some fly-by-night companies that are, or, we actually got a call the other day from, hey, I bought these from X, Y, Z, how come I don't have everything? We've never heard of that company, I don't know where they got their information. So complying with state law, we do send to three legitimate, uh, bid agencies. And then also through the process within the bid, the bid packages themselves, we're always make sure that you're compliant with what disadvantaged businesses or women owned businesses have to be included in the bid. And like a CBG project is completely different than a s- project that's city money only. Um, city money only doesn't have those requirements, um, it's much more straightforward. It's your money, so you don't have federal, federal dollars tied to it or anything. Um, I answered a lot, I hope I've answered your question.
Absolutely, absolutely. So one thing comes to mind, um, Mr. Manager and, and Ms. Urban. So like the library project, when we did that with the air conditioning, and we only got one bid back. Is that just because nobody would respond, that we?
We followed the procedures for the state bidding, because it was a project over twenty-five thousand dollars, and we sent those, uh, or we did all of our required, um, advertisements, all of those types of things. That project was done, I believe, in-house. Wasn't that done through our, uh, purchasing department? Who put together that bid package?
Okay, okay, so.
But we sent it to multiple locations, to multiple vendors.
How do we determine the vendors to send that to?
Uh, we get, keep an ongoing vendor of vendors that we know do certain, whatever, whatever topic it is, whether it's the library, HVAC system, or, or construction companies. We keep lists, and we share, they, they, if we happen to do one in-house that they don't do, you know, obviously, we share lists.
Okay, alright, thank you.
One of the biggest problems we have locally, because a lot of peo- we hear a lot of, well, you know, we can't bid on the city projects, or we don't know about the city projects, or, for whatever, whatever thing we hear. But one of the biggest requirements that people have problems with, with our local, uh, construction companies, some of the smaller ones, is the bonding process. Um, this process of, this project that we're gonna bring you tonight is five hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars. You gotta be able to bond that project, and also be able to provide a warranty with that work. So there's additional requirements, and if you wanna step in on that.
Yeah, may I help address that as well? That's state law. Um, if it's a fifty thousand dollar and above, or above fifty thousand dollars, uh, it is required to have all of the bonds, bid securities and bond securities. And then during construction, that's a protection of the public. So that my tax dollars, you know, are being protected, that they're requiring those larger projects, um, to, if it defaults, it's like having insurance to make sure that it will get completed. So that's kind of the spirit of it is with the bonding, is those largers are protecting the, the public tax dollars. Fifty thousand dollars and below, the bonding is not required. Um, the city charter does not have any bu- extra bonding requirements, just the solicitation of the bid process is different. But for fifty thousand and below, the, the bonding is not required.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number four, consider an act upon an ordinance, amendment ordinance number two-six-five-six, which established the budget for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, refilling all confliction ordinances, dividing for severability, and also declaring an emergency deserving.
Mayor, Council, um, this is exhibit A, and we have approved the education, uh, bond. I went ahead and budget amended for the entire amount that's left in that fund balance, so that I won't have to come back and budget amend again when they come back for the next payment. But this is for the education fund, their final, the, the old, old bond money.
Any questions or comments? Take a motion in a second. Motion, Councilman Reed, second, Councilman Smith, any discussion? Cora would you call it all, please?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries, this has an emergency with it, so take a motion in a second on the emergency. Motion, Councilman Reed, second, Councilman Smith, any discussion? Cora would you call it all, please?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries, we're on to agenda item number five, discussion and possible action on approval of an agreement with Oklahoma Department of Forestry to accept the release and transfer of two Zodiac seven-person inflatable watercraft. These watercraft will be utilized by our Swift Water Rescue Team. Chief Brewer?
I think you pretty much summed it up. Yes, Mayor of the Council, the item before you is to accept two Zodiac inflatable boats from the Oklahoma Department of Forestry.
Any questions?
Do they still float?
I hope they do. I've looked at them, but we're not trying them though.
How often do we, how often do we just deploy our Swift Water fairly, fairly? I, I know they're in the paper.
The, the county team, which we're part of, they usually go once or twice a year. Yeah.
Any, any other questions, comments? Take a motion in a second. Motion, Councilman Reed, second, Councilman Smith, any discussion? Cora would you call it all, please?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries.
Mayor, Council, thank you.
We're on to agenda item number six, consider an act upon accepting the bid amount of five hundred ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred nineteen dollars from Built Right Construction LLC. And authorize the mayor to sign the notice of award for the Washington Avenue Improvement Project. Mr. Burke?
Council, thank you. Uh, we had five contractors that, that elected to, uh, to get the plans and specifications and look over the project. We had three that elected to submit bids on the project. The bids ranged from a hundred and, uh, five hundred ninety-nine thousand all the way up to six hundred and fifty-nine thou- thousand, low bidders with Built Right Construction. We do have quite a bit, bit of work with Built Right Construction. Our recommendation is award the project to them.
Any questions, Councilman Smith?
This is some tail.
This, this is the intersection of Fifth and Washington, all the way to...
The roundabout.
The roundabout, yes, sir. And we're going up to the intersection of Sixth and, and Washington, but it does not include that. Yes.
Fifth and Sixth.
That's correct.
Councilman Pritchard?
Did, that, does, you said we're going from Fifth to Sixth, but this bid price does not include the work on the road?
This includes the work on the, we're, we're doing the entire intersection at Fifth and Washington, all the way to the intersection of Sixth and Washington, but not that intersection. So it is the road between the two intersections.
But Sixth Street, Sixth Street intersection was rebuilt in the last project a couple of years ago.
That's correct.
Why don't you explain to them a little bit about what we're doing with the diagonal parking on the side with the post office, where we currently have all those cars sticking out?
Sure, sure. On the north side of the post office right now, there is parking for the post office itself, but the parking spots are not long enough, and the backend of the cars are actually in the roads. We are actually moving that parking toward the, the, uh, post office itself, so that we can get the cars in there, and we're making it all ADA compliant, so.
I, I have a question about that, since I'm somewhat familiar with the post office.
There you go.
The, the, the traffic circle, as you enter it from, uh, Third Street toward, going towards Fifth Street, you'll be turning, you'll be turning south, coming around south, and then if you wanted to continue on Washington, exiting there. So when you're exiting there, and you've got diagonal parking coming out, you've got cars coming this way, is that not gonna cause a problem? See what I'm talking about, you're gonna be coming like this.
You're, you're.
And you're gonna, and then you're gonna be going down Washington. So when you're backing out here, this car that's gonna be coming this way is gonna be in the circle prior to hitting that intersection. Still not, still. You're coming this way, when you come into the circle, you're gonna be coming this way. So you're gonna be having cars that are gonna be coming this way, well, these guys are back, you're not going. So is that not gonna be an issue?
It's, it's not.
It's not? We got, this is plenty of space for it?
Plenty of space, and the speed limit, limit controls the, the distances that you gotta have, and that's twenty-five miles an hour.
Okay. You guys don't get to see my artwork, unfortunately.
Here, wait a second.
Minimalist. Any other questions, uh, Council Pritchard?
Sorry, I'm, uh, so there's the roundabout, and then there's the street, Washington from Fifth to Sixth. I'm trying to decide, from looking at this bid, how much of the cost is in redoing just the street between the two intersections? Do you know?
No.
Is that a lot, Adam?
Yeah, well, it's, it's, it's in there because we are putting asphalt between the two intersections, so I can pull that out. But I don't, I don't know what that number is right off the top, but I can get it for you.
So, but the street is gonna be asphalt?
It will be, yes, sir. And we're, and we're putting concrete curbing and, and gutter along it also.
That's what I was gonna say, rebuilding the curbing gutter and the drainage sys- not the underground drainage system, but the above ground drainage system.
And you also have to look in there, the m- milling of, of the existing asphalt, because we're milling it down also.
I guess what I'm trying to, and maybe we don't, maybe this is not an easy to answer question, but if we were just going to repave the street, not do the traffic circle, how much would this project cost? Do we know the answer to that? I could, problem, go ahead.
Councilman, one thing that we did look at is originally, uh, when we were getting ready to design this project, we looked at rebuilding Washington from Fifth to Sixth, just like we're talking about extending the parking next to the post office, and rebuilding the intersection at, at Fifth Street. And the reason we're gonna rebuild that intersection, because we've got some problems, there's some dr- al- some drainage, and also some sewer problems in there. So the original project was gonna redo the entire intersection too. And then what we had was, we had a traffic circle that was offered to us. Uh, they, they looked at the cost of dropping, what, what, we knew what the cost was to rebuild the intersection. What was the additional cost to drop a prop, uh, traffic circle on top of that? And that's the sixty thousand dollars additional cost, uh, to change the intersection and, and build it with a traffic signal. That's the private individual that then gave the city sixty thousand dollars to do the traffic circle. So the original project was to rebuild the intersection and all, and Washington from Fifth to Sixth.
Sir? No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Can't change my question.
But we are doing, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We are doing, as part of this project, the sewer and drainage issues are, that's part of this?
We, we are addressing the, the drainage issues that, that are there, yes, sir. And the sewer, we're relocating a, a manhole outside of the tr- traffic circle, along with it.
Um, I'll just, there's just a comment now. It seems like a lot of money. I mean, I don't know the condition of the drainage and the sewer, but I drive by there regularly, almost every day, on the way to school. And when I look at spending six hundred thousand dollars on that part of town, and that, you know, that street, that roadway, it just seems like way too much money, especially in comparison to other areas around town. It seems like we could do more good, and maybe I'm wrong, but it seems like we could do more good for six hundred thousand dollars than this part of town, or this, this intersection. I mean, it just seems like it works pretty good. So I'm, I am reluctant to vote to spend six hundred thousand dollars right there.
Any other questions, comments? Alright, then in that case, is there a motion? Motion, Councilman Reed, second, Councilman Smith, any further discussion? Cora would you call it all, please?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Stevens?
No.
Pritchard?
No.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
We're on to agenda item number seven, consider an act upon accepting the bid amount of eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars from Built Right Construction LLC, and authorize the mayor to sign the notice of award for Block Two Thirty-One Alley Drainage Improvements Project.
Mayor, Council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Um, this project, we had four contractors that did pick up bids. Uh, we went through the process, like we talked about earlier, to where we sent it to a, a, about forty plus we did send it to, but four did pick up. Um, three contractors did submit bids. Um, the low bid comes in with, at eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars from, uh, Built Right Construction, and that is our recommendation to award.
Any questions, comments?
I do have one question.
Can I have that special, please?
And this has nothing to do with Built Right per se, but we've awarded them a lot of work, and I know they're bidding this, and they're getting this bid, so even with all that being said, are they capable of keeping up with, with all of this work right now?
We actually.
That's not a knock on them, that's just a legitimate question.
We actually had a frank conversation about that, and they are hiring additional crews. And in some cases, they'll hire additional companies to come in and help them out if they get too much work. Um, they've been keeping up so far. This really is a small job, that once they finish up another, they can hop in and knock this out pre- relatively quickly. Um, you know, the, the Fifth Street is gonna be a little bit bigger beast.
Absolutely.
Um, but I know they have multiple crews that are working, so, um, I have confidence they can get it done.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, Councilman Pritchard?
What is this project?
This project is over by Adams, between D and E. And the alley itself is, um, there, it was concrete at one time. Utilities had to go in and replace sewer line. They've, they've been in there over the years several times, where all that concrete is mostly gone. Um, now the water is actually washing out and going over into yards and causing erosion. So what this project will do is keep the water in the alley itself, flow it all the way down to E Street, uh, and then out, and it'll, it'll stop flooding, um, and damaging people's properties. And also might point out, that faulty sewer line that we talked about that's been patched over the years was included in on this, and it will be replaced as well. So the city won't be having to go back in, tear up concrete you just built because you got a bad sewer line. And so it was budgeted, and we've got the sewer in this bid as well.
This is the alley that, uh, that's parking access for the homes along there as well?
No, uh, this alley has no access by vehicle. And actually, when we're done, we'll have bollards on one end, so that it's not used for vehicular. It's right across from the school.
Mayor? Council Brown?
I was just gonna ask about the warranties, that, did you tell me before, it's two years?
It is two years.
Okay.
Okay. You, this is a, this is a concrete alley, correct?
It, well, if you're looking on Google Earth, it was concrete at that time. I think that's a two thousand fourteen, um, aerial. Since that time, most of that concrete has been tore out, making repairs in the alley itself. And because of all those repairs, and the concrete not being any, there anymore, um, the water is now flooding those y- those houses.
But we're gonna put the concrete back, correct?
That's what's designed, it's actually a five-foot wide, um, beaver slide, for lack of a better term, to convey the water back. So it won't be a driving surface, it'll be for the stormwater surface, um, and pedestrians. Um, basically a five-foot wide sidewalk when it's not raining.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Take a motion in a second, motion, Councilman Reed, second, Councilman Smith, any further discussion? Cora would you call it all, please?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries, we're on to agenda item number eight, consider an act upon declaring certain equipment surplus property in accordance with Code of Ordinances, section two dash four-ten, and authorize the city manager sell it, sell it in accordance with the Code of Ordinances, section two dash four-one-one. Ms. Urban?
This is a tractor that we use, a nineteen eighty-one tractor that we use out at the water treatment plant. It is no longer, uh, working. Um, we always, I always try to let you know why we're surplusing, and what we're, how we're gonna follow the Code of Ordinances. We have, uh, multiple bids from... We have, uh, multiple bids from, uh, multiple vendors, uh, to buy this tractor, so, in the tractor industry, and we will replace it.
I'm surprised it's worth anything at all.
So, so were we.
Yes.
Any questions or comments? Take a motion in a second, motion, Councilman Reed, second Councilman Smith, any further discussion? Cora, would you call it all, please?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. Excuse me, we're on to agenda item number nine, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement with, with the Mer- Merriweather Group for consultant services for compensation, employee benefits, and performance management study. Ms. Urban again?
Yes, I'm very passionate about this topic. Um, the last time that the city of McAllister had an evaluation of our job, um, positions was in two thousand eight. Um, majority of its focus was based on longevity. Uh, we, we want to, uh, hire this group, they're highly qualified, highly experienced, and recommended. I've included, um, I believe in the packet, the, well, there, it's listed on their agreement. Um, there, uh, other cities that they've done, but this consulting group, and we've been doing this research, uh, for a while now, and this consulting group will enable us to kinda reach another level with our employees, and, uh, building those team, uh, the team atmosphere and, and everyone, uh, and, uh, reward people based on their skills and production and those kinda things, and we've compete with, like you said, uh, businesses for, uh, employees, and we have a very stringent, um, step, uh, that we adhere to, but it is very limiting as far as who we can attract to come here. And so I've, uh, concentrated a lot on, uh, flex time and, and different things like this, but this is the next step, and this is, will allow us to try to recruit better, and not that we don't have good employees, but the most qualified applicants, and they will want to come here. Uh, we have to compete with some major, uh, uh, industries here, so.
I did, I did see in their, uh, scope of services that they would be advising on the FLSA change, law changes that are coming up. Do you know anything about that? Cause I know, I think we do comp time with some overtime, don't we?
They get twelve hours, um...
Can't that FLSA have a big effect on that, do you know?
Yes. On our budget? Brett left. Yes.
Has a large effect on our budget.
It does. A majority of our overtime and fire is that...
You know, but are you aware of what the law changes are? Cause I, I'm not.
I'm not aware.
That's why we're bringing these folks in instead, to get us on the aspect also.
Any other, any other questions or comments? Take a motion in a second. Motion, Councilman Brown, second Councilman Smith, any discussion? Cora, would you call it all, please?
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Pritchard?
No.
Stevens?
No.
Reed?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. Thank you. Uh, we are on to new business, any matter not known or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda in accordance with section three one one point nine, title twenty-five Oklahoma State statutes. Do we have any new business?
We don't, mayor.
All right, then we will go to city manager's report.
Uh, just a couple of quick updates, uh, Lake McAllister, the thirty-inch water line, uh, that water line has actually been installed all the way up to the intake, um, at the pump station. Uh, they will be preparing that for, to make those connections in the future, but that project's moving along very well. Had few, few little hiccups, but not a lot, and it seems to be coming together, uh, rather well. Uh, the twenty-inch water line out at the water plant, uh, that project's coming along well because of weather conditions and also because of, uh, water breaks in the city, we have postponed making that, shutting down the plant and making those connections, will be make, coordinating that effort when all of the tanks are full, the water plants full, and things have slowed down in the city a little bit. Uh, we are experiencing a large number of leaks and breaks right now, uh, throughout the entire city. Uh, when you call the city or people call you, let them know that, uh, we need that information, uh, we will transfer that information, but the city is focusing on leaks, uh, or, excuse me, focusing on breaks, and some of those leaks are left to, to go for quite a while, uh, as we get a handle on some of those leaks around the city. Uh, the last thing I wanted to bring up is the Coal Creek Pump Station that we're rebuilding as a secondary water source out on Coal Creek. Um, the crane was in last week, pulled all those pumps, and those pumps have been sent off, they're gonna be rebuilt, and, uh, next phase will be the electrical phase of, of the, of the project, and we'll be bringing that online in two thousand and twenty. That's all good news for the city.
All right, we'll move to remarks and inquiries by the council. Councilman Smith, vice president Stevens?
Mr. Stacey, like, when is the next Stormwater Committee meeting? Just email it to me, let me know. I, I'm, I'm sure you don't know that off the top of your head. Um, and then my other question is just one out of curiosity, when we had several breaks a couple of weekends ago now, where Summit Ridge was without water for quite a few times, and, and, uh, know there's breaks all over the city, it seemed like that weekend, why didn't we hire several different contractors?
Uh, we made multiple phone calls. Uh, Built Right was the one that responded and was able to mobilize very quickly for us.
Okay.
We, we have a list that we go to and, and we start working with them. They, they responded very quickly for us.
Okay, so we, we did, we just couldn't get anybody else to come out?
Uh, we, we, we called other contractors.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Reed?
Pete, with the, uh, change in the weather, are, are we ready for, uh, snow and ice? Do, do we have the bulk of salt and sand ready to go?
Absolutely, uh, we've already purchased additional, uh, bulk, um, salt, and it's all stored. We do not spread sand normally, it's always salt. Uh, all the equipment is serviced and ready to go. If you remember, it was four or five years ago when we had a lot of snowstorms, this council stepped forward and bought us a lot of, uh, new equipments, uh, snow plows, blades, uh, stainless steel spreaders, and I'm happy to inform you, we haven't had to use that since, so.
So we're ready to...
But, but that year, we needed it really bad, so, uh, we are ready to go, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I hope it rests the dilapidation.
That's why we bought stainless steel.
Councilman Brown?
Oh.
Councilman Pritchard?
We'll move to, uh, reminder, uh, mayor's comments and committee appointments. Uh, going to be, I, I am going to be, uh, putting a committee together on the, uh, it's tied into the comprehensive plan and the action, uh, items that have been, uh, created. Uh, I've ju- I'm just at the point of going to do that, I haven't done any thinking on it yet, but, uh, I will be putting, uh, be asking some council members to, uh, to, uh, be members of that. Uh, I have a question for city manager, cause someone asked me about it, our road striping projects.
Yes.
I know we do, we kind of do those as bid packages.
We do.
Do we have, uh, any, any, do you know at all when West Street might be involved in that?
I do not, I don't, I don't know if it's on this list, but I can tell you that the striping company, because that state bid contract, that's who we go to, uh, was supposed to be here today and start grinding, uh, some of the old striping off the streets, and, um, they have, uh, canceled until next week. Next week is supposed to be in the sixty degrees on Monday and Tuesday, but I can't answer whether or not West Street's on it.
Can you check, check on it?
I certainly can.
And if it isn't on this one, look at it being in the next bid package that we do?
We will do that, yes, sir.
Cause there is a lot of traffic on that road. The other, uh, the other thing I have is, I was, uh, I was privileged to be a guest with, for the, with the Girl Scouts, um, the early part of last week, they are, they are, they were in a competition that, uh, they have to do, they have to do a project for the city, and then they have to do a robotics project along with it, and it's pretty amazing what they, what they did for the city was they did greenhouses, working with the, uh, community garden people. But their robotics, they have, they have this table, and they have to build, that it's made out of Legos essentially, and they have to build and program the device that goes through this table and, and performs so many functions in a, in a certain period of time, and they competed at a state level this past weekend, and, uh, happy to announce that they got second place, so, uh, they will be, they'll be, I assume, going on to a next level on that, so. It was, it was, it was pretty neat, I gotta tell you, cause I mean, you gotta, that's some, there'd be some very young kids, and they were, I thought there's no way in the world that they would know anything along this line, which just shows how old I am, I suppose, but, uh, they, uh, they had an incredibly great time just, just doing the playing with it, so I can imagine what they were like when they won, uh, up in Tulsa.
Mayor, mayor, I did forget to do something. I wanna mention, the Buffaloes are in the, uh, playoffs, uh, so if anybody come in, I mean, come out Friday night, also McAllister cheer, they won this past weekend, I think they got third place, so. If I don't say that, they'll get on to me, and those, those kids.
And we wanna thank PD, cause I believe they gave them the escort on their way when they went through town. With that, we will recess council meeting. I take a motion to convene as McAllister Airport Authority, a motion to include approval of minutes from October twenty-second, twenty nineteen, regular meeting, the McAllister